Teachers and drivers who have been working tirelessly to support students and families during this period of school closure. We know we're now heading towards another big lift when we think about school reopening. Grateful in advance for all of the hard work. I know that we'll go into that. And looking forward to partnering with you as we continue to move through this process. So I'm going to start by just giving a reminder about what, how COVID-19 spreads. If we can get to the next slide, that'd be great. So I think everybody's pretty familiar with this, but just as a reminder, because it really is what's driving the public health guidance. What we already know about COVID-19. It spreads through respiratory droplets that are produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes. This is really critical when we think about cloth face coverings, which I'm going to talk about a little bit later. And between people who are in close contact with one another, six feet or closer. We also know that it spreads most when contagious people have symptoms, that it's most contagious then, and that those symptoms include fever, cough, and shortness of breath. And there is some evidence that suggests that touching surfaces with the virus on it, and then touching your mouth, nose, or eyes may also be a means for getting COVID-19. So all of those things are important when we think about the public health guidance. I now want to move to talking a little bit about what we do know about children and COVID-19. So what we know from the research so far, and I just want to remind everyone how new COVID-19 is and how much we're still learning. So what we know so far is that while people are most contagious when they have symptoms, although people with no mild symptoms can also spread the virus. So again, I said, you know, mostly we see the spread with symptomatic people, but you have heard of things like asymptomatic spread, and we know that to be a factor. We also know that children overall have more mild illnesses than adults. So while we have seen some tragic deaths, including here in North Carolina, of children who have contracted COVID-19, and then that set up a series of other multi-symptoms. That is rare, and what we know generally is that children overall have more mild illnesses. We also know that so far, the data tells us that unlike with flu and other respiratory illnesses that we usually think about, children may not be vectors in the same way that adults are. They may not be a major factor in the spread, and that's what the data is telling us so far. So those are also important things to know when we think about getting back to school. So now I want to talk, really dig in very quickly into the toolkit and walk you through, through the toolkit at a high level, happy to answer detailed questions, but I'll try to move fairly quickly since I know there's a lot on the agenda. We hope that this public health guidance, we know that it goes hand in hand with the DPI operational guidance. We've worked closely together to make sure they are very aligned. And we hope that students, families, and staff will use it to know what to expect and how to plan. So a little bit about the organization of the toolkit. It includes both requirements and recommendations. So those requirements are the baseline actions to mitigate risks of spread of COVID-19, and also supporting the safety of students, staff, and families. And remember, all of these requirements and recommendations are designed to mitigate risk, mitigate spread. We don't have a vaccine right now, so our best weapons are the things that we can do to slow down this virus and make sure that we're actively tracking it and isolating folks when they get it. There are also recommendations that are good practices that we hope schools will also consider adopting. And I do just want to pause here and say that these are the requirements and recommendations now. Just like the DPI operational guidance, these things may evolve. So folks do need to be a little bit flexible and know that it is possible that as we see how our metrics look, and right now frankly, I know you've heard Secretary Cohen say she is concerned. We are seeing some trends that are concerning to us. So it is potentially possible that we would have to revisit some of the things that are currently recommended, and whether or not they also need to move to being requirements. For example, we're going to be looking closely at the cloth face coverings and some of the other related recommendations in this document. So let's talk a little bit about the three plans. I think everybody's pretty familiar with this, that we are asking that every school district and every charter school create three different plan levels. This aligns to the operational guidance. Plan A is what we call minimal social distancing, and that is the least restrictive for school reopening. It doesn't require, for example, density reduction and strict adherence to the six-feet social distancing. And this would be the plan that we would hope to move to if, in fact, we see our metrics stabilize or start moving in a positive direction, and right now, we're not quite there yet. Plan B is the more moderate social distancing. This again is where I will talk a little bit more detail, where we are talking about actual reduction in density and that stricter adherence to the six-feet social distancing. And then Plan C is really what school has looked like for the latter part of this year, where everyone is in a remote learning only. And that would really be if we saw significant worsening of trends and felt the need to take very more significant measures statewide to mitigate spread.
I miss you, bud.
Let's talk a little bit about the public health guidance. And I'm going to cover social distancing, cloth face coverings, and protecting vulnerable populations quickly. The social distancing in the Plan A option is really much more about marking spaces, trying to keep students from congregating and staff in areas where they would typically congregate. But again, not that strict adherence to the six-feet social distancing or density reduction. Cloth face coverings, you will see currently in the guidance, the cloth face coverings are strongly, strongly recommended for both students and for staff and for anyone else coming into the school building. We know that cloth face coverings protect our loved ones, our families, our neighbors from contracting the disease. When we wear a cloth face covering, it's our way of showing other people that we care. It's really important, a spread mitigation tool that we have, and so we are strongly encouraging it. We do know there are situations where individuals will have health conditions or mental health conditions or other kinds of issues where they will not be able to wear a cloth face covering, which is why currently cloth face coverings are strongly recommended. And we know there's a lot of discussion around that, and we too continue to have discussion in that area. There's also a section on protecting vulnerable populations. This is really thinking through how do you handle your vulnerable, your high-risk populations, both of staff and students, and plan appropriately for those groups. So moving into social distancing, again, you'll see, again, under the Plan B only currently, that would be six feet of social distancing required at all times in schools. And I do want to be clear on school transportation. We have gotten a couple of questions about whether you could use Plexiglas in place of the six feet. We're looking into that. We're doing a scan. I don't know that that's going to be an appropriate go-to, but we will get out an FAQ on that. Limit density of people in the school facilities and transportation vehicles to no greater than 50% of maximum occupancy to ensure social distancing of that six feet. And then I want to talk now a little bit more about cleaning and hygiene, monitoring for symptoms, handling suspected presumptive or confirmed positive cases, and combating misinformation. I won't go into detail on the cleaning and hygiene. That's all the common sense things you would expect. Folks need to wash their hands frequently. They need to have access to hand sanitizer. They need to, we need to have cleaning of surfaces regularly and routinely. All of that is covered as requirements in the guidance document. There is a requirement for monitoring for symptoms for all students and staff and others entering the building. As far as before, prior to getting on a bus, school districts will have the option of one of two ways of doing that symptom screening. One way would be to do apparent attestation, and I'm going to talk about this in a little bit more, or another way would be to actually do it physically prior to getting on the bus. There is a section on handling suspected presumptive or confirmed positive cases, and there is a specific, very strict protocol that needs to be followed in those cases that's detailed very clearly in the guidance, and there's a whole breakout chart on that. And then there is going to be a strong need for very proactive and ongoing communication so that folks understand what's happening in schools, what COVID-19 is, how it spreads, and what they need to do their part to reduce that spread. So now, moving on, I'm going to talk a little bit again, more detail about that monitoring for symptoms. So you see the symptom checklist. We do have symptom checklist samples in the back in the toolkit. I'm not going to walk through those. Do want to add that daily temperature screening will be required. And do want to talk a little bit more detail on the next slide about transportation. So again, as I mentioned, and for folks that do travel, for students that will be on school buses or in vans, school districts may choose to use this parent attestation form so that the parent or guardian is doing the symptom screening before they send their child to the bus to get picked up. But if that is the methodology that is selected by the school district, those students will then need to be fully screened prior to going inside the school building once they get on site and have that temperature checked. Then moving in, again, a little bit more detail there about handling of suspected cases. There's a clear protocol, again, that needs to happen once that screening occurs, and what needs to happen in terms of the number of days children or staff need to be out, what needs to happen in the event that there is a positive, et cetera. Moving into the other areas of the guidance, and I am moving through these fairly quickly, I know. A whole section on water and ventilation systems. So of course, what we know is that the likelihood of spread seems to be greater inside. It's really important that ventilation systems are operating well and efficiently to help that air circulate. And we want to see water systems checked, and there to be the availability of good, warm water when folks are washing their hands. There's a whole section on transportation. A lot of the guidance in the transportation section is similar to the protocols for cleaning and hygiene when you're inside the school facility, wiping down surfaces, having access to hand sanitizer, et cetera. We did include a section on coping and resilience. There's been a lot of conversation about children and families, and staff who have been experiencing a lot of stress during this period. We share your concern about learning loss and the aggravation of disparities in learning that has resulted from this illness. And there's going to be a lot of need for social, emotional, as well as academic support when children arrive back at school. And then there is a final section on additional considerations. And then just briefly, I'll talk about what's coming soon. We are going to be translating the entire toolkit into Spanish. Right now, we've only translated the symptom screening checklist into Spanish, but we're going to do it all in Spanish. We are going to address in very great detail infection control supplies and the PPE ordering process. So I'll stop there and say very quickly, State Emergency Operations Center will be purchasing those PPE items for school nurses or individuals who are designated to perform medical tasks. And those four items are face shields, gowns, the thermometers, and surgical masks, which are needed when isolation needs to occur. All of the other supplies that are needed, and again, I just want to be clear that in general, what most people need is access to washing their hands, hand sanitizer, and a supply of cloth face coverings. That is adequate for most people, and then of course, for the environment, you need the cleaning supplies. For all of those supplies, and there is some need for gloves for some particular roles within schools, those need to be ordered by the school districts, paid for by the school districts via a convenience contract that we will be providing detailed information about how to access those convenience vendors. Through the Department of Administration has worked with us on that, and that will be coming out next week. We're also working on a frequently asked questions. Great questions are already coming in. We did some webinars with superintendents in charter schools yesterday. We have an email address particularly devoted to getting questions, and we'll be covering all those questions in our FAQ. And we're also, we're going to collaborate with DPI on a what families can expect, really simple, three-pager, two- or three-pager, in really simple terms of just what to expect when families get, when children get back to school. And then we are also finalizing additional guidance, which will add to this document on what to do if there is a confirmed case or a cluster of confirmed cases in a school site in terms of tracing exposures and the cleaning and closing protocols. And with that, I am happy to answer questions, or maybe perhaps we want to answer questions at the end, but I'm going to turn it back over to you, Chairman Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Yes, let's go ahead and proceed to the school operational guidance with Dr. Stigall and Perry, and then we'll enter into a question period. So, Dr. Stigall, Dr. Emery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is David Stigall, and I want to thank Susan for her part with the work we've done with the HHS and the partnership with the Department, the Board, Governor's Office, and the HHS. It's been a long journey, and we're very excited to have both their guidance with the help side and the guidance you'll be seeing here in just a moment from the DPI to help schools and districts and communities navigate the next steps for opening schools around, especially around those academic aspects. As you see, our document is entitled Lighting Our Way Forward, North Carolina's Guidance on Reopening Public Schools. And there's two parts that I want to reference for you. We have two documents. This is the first document, which is called a summary document. It's a short summary publication which links to our more robust guidebook, which I'll share in just a moment shortly. Next slide, please. This slide explains the process and the alignment we have with the HHS. It also shows the overarching topics in the purple box. So those who access this document can see what's encompassed within it, and it gives a little summary of the guidebook with a hot link to the guidebook here. We'll get in a moment to show you how we anticipate people utilizing this summary document, which is much shorter than the guidebook, to find specific support and structures and resources within the guidebook. Next slide, please. This slide explains how the summary document is structured. So the summary document, as you'll see in just a moment, each page has a topic within, on the page, and some subheadings to go along with it. It also has pictures, a photo strip, which link to the guidebook as well around that specific subheading. If we scroll to the next one. We have a message from our leadership, from the board, and from Superintendent Johnson. So this slide discloses the three plan options that schools in North Carolina will be utilizing. And be reminded that the HHS will determine and notify schools which plan they are in based upon health metrics. School districts and schools may determine to be more stringent, but they can't, as was shared, they can't be more lenient than the plan that, based on the health metrics within their community. So if we look at the next slide, this reopening plan and scheduling is referring to these three plans here. And these three plans, obviously, as was just explained, Plan A, B, and C have different parameters and guidance that goes on with those from the help side. Plan A being very minimal social distancing, and Plan B being where students are coming back into the building, but not fully, having full occupancy, having a lower density within the school. And Plan C being what we have been in in the spring, the remote learning. And again, these, each of these, we'll go through in just a moment to show you how the guidebook, no matter where a school district is or a school is within any of these three plans, we have linked resources, considerations, tools that can help them implement and hopefully give them some support to implement, and to move vertically between the plans as their restrictions are lifted and they move, or if they're, in some cases, if they have to move from A to B or B to C, we've given them hopefully resources that will help make that transition smoother. Next slide, please. So our slides are organized, each slide you'll see for the next six or so organized in the same manner. There's a heading at the top, and as you see, this is, this first heading is what we know is the most vital, student health and safety. And within the heading, if you'll stay on that, if you will go back to student health and safety real quick. So I just want to explain really quick, student health and safety is the major topic. And within our guidebook, we have whole sections on student health and safety. You see the subheadings, social distancing, cleaning, and hygiene, monitoring, and so forth. If someone wanted to know more about student health or safety or the support around that, they could click on the title, they could click on the subtitles. They wanted to know about cleaning and hygiene, they could click on the words cleaning and hygiene, or they could click on the photo strip, it would take them to the guidebook as well. And we will in just a moment go give you a preview of that by clicking on one of the topics. I will explain that the guidebook right now is around 120 pages, close to 120 pages. It is an ever-growing and ever-changing, and this document we're looking at now is a summary document, which will become a publication and more static because it will link, again, it hyperlinks to the guidebook. So the guidebook itself, someone may go in and see that there are edits being made and additions being made. And that's what we're hoping that people will see, that this is a working, living document, as Superintendent Johnson shared earlier. Districts, we've encouraged districts and charter schools to share, if they come up with creative ideas or strategies, to share those with us, and we will put those within the guidebook to build capacity across the state so that everyone has a tool belt of resources and ideas to pull from, and they're not having to create them all on their own. As you see the next heading, and again, we won't click on each of these, but we'll click on one in just a moment. Each of these slides that you're seeing, that one being health and safety of employees, the next one being around social and emotional learning and mental health. These, each of these slides links to the much larger guidebook. Pause here, and operations is an example if you wanted to know about, as she mentioned, as Susan mentioned a moment ago, information around transportation, you could click on the bus picture. You could click on the word transportation, or you could click on operation to take you into that guidebook. So this is just another example of trying to make it easy to navigate, user-friendly, clean and clear for everyone so that they won't have to fumble through hundreds of pages or dozens of pages. They can instead just click to a live link, which will be linked to our guidebook. So next page, please. Communication is another major topic. We understand that parents and community members, and even other states are sharing ideas and communicating with one another. We know strong communication and transparent communication and trustworthy communication is vital. So we're blessed that our department has been meeting with PIOs weekly, working on communication tools, strategies, making sure that the message is being clear and accurate and combating misinformation, which is vital. There's so much out there online and that is published that it could be overwhelming. So we want to make sure that we have accurate information and that we, we're the place that can be reviewed for, that will combat misinformation if parents or community members have questions. Next slide, please. Student learning, we're going to pause here, and I want to give you an example. So if someone happens to come across this document online and they see student learning, any of these topics, if they're interested in, well, what is, if my district's in Plan B, what does that look like? What, I'm a teacher of fourth grade, what could a classroom look like? So you could click on, as happening now, you could click on the link, and it will take you directly to our larger guidebook. As I mentioned, the guidebook is formatted in a similar manner. We'll pause just a moment. It'll take us actually to the exact page that we just clicked on. There it is. So you see, it took it to social distancing. So you see the blue bookmarked link to the left of the word Plan B. She clicked on Plan B. Had she clicked on Plan A, it would have taken us to Plan A. Whatever word she clicked on is what it takes you to the document. But this bookmarked link is what links to the summary document we just came from. It also, if you happen not to see the summary document and you go to the, if you have this 115, 16-page document, if you were to just have this online, you could click on the table of contents, any of the words, and it takes you within the document to this spot as well. If you would scroll down through this, as you see, Plan B, we know that Plan B and Plan A and Plan C each have considerations. So we put here the situation considerations for districts and schools to consider. We put in here some kind of a, trying to be their thought partner, things for them to maybe reference to, ideas, structures. Keep scrolling, please. There we go. And so, and it jumped us to Plan C. And so we give a description of what the, if you're in a remote Plan C, for example, what does that mean? What's the description? And what are some considerations and some guiding principles to go along with that to help me as a district? Again, we try to be, to create practical examples, practical strategy, practical considerations. And again, we won't go through this entire document, but there are tables and charts, there are links, there's sample plans that you could look at. If we're in Plan B, for example, we might alternate A-B day. We might do, have some students work half the day in the morning, others in the afternoon. Just not telling any district that this is the one and only way, and instead saying, you might want to consider this, you might want to, here's a strategy, here's an example that you could take and implement immediately. But the resources are there for them to not have to create things from scratch. So if we go back to the slideshow. And again, so we have two documents, a summary document here that links to a much larger, ever-changing guidebook. We have here also linked to resources, and these resources all go back to the guidebook as well. So if someone wanted to know, what does the CDC say about reopening guidance? That link will take them to the CDC, which is also in our guidebook as well. So no matter which document you see, which one you come across, you'll have the same information, one in a condensed, navigatable way, and the other in a much more robust, much like a book or an online document would be, and those two will be linked together. We'll scroll to the next page. And I believe I am blessed to turn it over to Dr. Emery, who's going to share with you some of the, what we have planned going forward. This is not the finish line. This is our new beginning line. So Dr. Emery will be sharing our next steps.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Stigall, for guiding us through that. You know, you're a great teacher, and I know you've done this multiple times in the last 24 hours, and appreciate your helping us through. I just wanted to follow up with two items. One, the support and service that comes with this plan. Next week, we began two huge pieces of support, webinars on Wednesday for each of the components of the plan, along with office hours. And we shared yesterday with our superintendent and charter leader groups a beginning schedule, and we will do a quick little survey of them in our top 10 this week to determine their top two priorities from this guidebook and summary report so that we can address what's urgent for them first. Again, our work group leads are preparing those webinars, and the office hours really will just be, our folks will show up in that space, and anyone who wants to come with no agenda on our end, but an ability for them to ask questions, get clarification, or make suggestions for us of things that we may have overlooked. I want to reemphasize as well that this will grow. Yesterday, we had requests for pre-K information, and could that be added? Even though the guidance has gone out, could it go in the addendum? That's a change we'll already make to this document. As we speak, there are over a As we speak, there are over 100 users in the document, and that has been fairly consistent since we shared it with superintendents and charter leaders yesterday. I also want to close with just, again, a huge thank you to the silver lining, in my belief, of COVID-19. We started with 14 work groups, they merged into six, they have had superintendent voice. As we moved to reopening, we've had teacher voice, we've had principal voice, we've had chief academic officer voice. DHHS, as well as the department, have taken suggestions, thought partner processes, back and forth between stakeholder groups, to get to where we are in this moment. And I would like to encourage us to find ways to build this system into how we do all of our work going forward, because I think the cross divisions, director work that has happened, we've all learned from, and we've also realized the power of the collaboration and the communication in this process. I would also say that also includes a daily 8:30 meeting with our board chair, Ms. Jeff Coltrane from the governor's office, our state superintendent, Dr. Stegall and I, powerful ways to be sure that we're communicating and staying on the same, on the same path here. So thanks to all who did incredible work.
Well, thank you, Dr. Stegall and Emory. Before I turn to my colleagues for their comments, I want to echo the superintendent's praise for your work and your team's work. I think the high-quality content, what you're delivering, the user-friendly structure and format, the readily apparent close coordination with Susan and our partners and Health and Human Services, and most of all, I think in this document, you have captured the can-do spirit of North Carolina to care for and educate our children. Recognize this, because the situation continued to evolve, this and the DHHS guidance will continue to evolve, this is not, will never be a final product, but constantly responding to the changing conditions and our needs. And I commend you both, along with Ms. Perry, for your fine work and great leadership. Now I'll turn to my colleagues for their comments and questions.
Chair, this is Olivia.
Yes, Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you, Chair Davis. Thanks to everyone, the three individuals who have presented this morning, and just to echo, yes, this has been, this is incredible work, and I've only begun to read the documents in the last couple of days, so no doubt, the word incredible applies, and probably we could add a few other adjectives to that. I have a, if I could ask a couple of questions. Number one, I'm assuming that schools in North Carolina will go back into operation under Plan B. That's, that's the sense I'm getting, and is that Plan B, if that is correct, then is that going to be applicable to all 115 school districts? I heard, I, I thought I heard maybe a minute ago, something about if a school district is in Plan B, and it gave, it caused me to think, well, will there be some discretion? So my first question is that. And then I, Chair, so I'll pause.
Yes, Ms. Perry.
Apologies. I'm happy to answer that question, Chairman Davis, this is Susan, if that's okay.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Sorry if I don't know the correct protocols, so correct me if I'm not, if I'm not doing this correctly, I'm happy to change gears. So thank you very much for that question, and I did, I did cover that very quickly, and I apologize. So just to be clear, in terms of how the decision will be made about which plan level school should be in, that decision will be made by the governor's office, DHHS, in collaboration with the State Board of Education and DPI. And we plan to make a decision by July 1st about which plan level school should be in. And that decision will be made at the, for the entire state. There is the potential that it could be made for a region, if the metrics indicated a good rationale for doing so. So far, the metrics are not suggesting that. It would not be a decision that would be made district by district level. So that decision will be made on or before July 1st. And as far as your question about what plan level we think we might be in, I think everyone's goal is that we are able to open at the Plan A level, and that is just going to take concerted effort across the state to continue to adhere to the three Ws, wear your face covering, wash your hands frequently, and wait six feet apart. But that is the, that is certainly everyone's ball, and I think that was clearly discussed at the press conference.
Okay, thank you very much. That does clear up my question. And Chair Davis, just one other question, it's very brief, and it goes to Dr. Stegall's point with reference to controlling, managing information and communication. My question is, have we communicated to our districts perhaps the need for a one person, a point person, it could be the superintendent, or it could be the director of communications, as that dispenser of, disseminator of information? Maybe that's too much in the weeds. I don't know.
This is Bev Emory. Thank you for the good question. I do want to lift up that from the beginning of our COVID work, Jessica Swinski, who came on, she is one of our regional case managers to help us with COVID communications, has had outreach with all of the public information officers across the state, as well as a daily comms team meeting. Those folks meet every day at 8:00, and every Friday at 8:00, we open that up to all of the PIOs across the state. So we have laid a really good infrastructure. Your question is not too much in the weeds, and we'll continue those contacts bi-weekly now going forward, to help with the very issue of communication that you raised, Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you so much, Dr. Emory, and thank you, Chair Davis. Those are the two pressing questions that have been answered.
Other questions from my colleague? Yes, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, sir, and I, I did owe the hard work that individuals working on this plan. I thank you for it. My question is, I sort of piggybacking on what my colleague, I'm looking at Plan A. Give me if I'm right or wrong, who will make the final decision, should we have to move to Plan B, by region, by district? Is that still the Health Department, DPI, State Board, and the Governor's Office?
Chairman Davis, would you like me to respond?
I'll take a stab at it, and correct me if I'm.
Great, thank you, sir.
So just as occurred since March 14th, the decision while we're in this period of what plan we would operate under statewide, will be made by the governor, consultation with the Department of Health and Human Services, this board, and DPI. And that includes, if there's any change from our original opening plan. So the initial decision will be made July 1st, as Ms. Perry commented to earlier, and then subsequently through the year, if we need to move to a different plan, hopefully less restrictive, then that decision will also be made by the governor until we're able to exit this COVID state and return to a more normal operating environment. Perry, would you say it any differently?
No, sir, I think that's accurate. I would only add that there, it is clear in the guidance as well, again, although when we're making that decision at likely the statewide level and possibly at a regional level, any school district always has the option, or county, et cetera, to be more restrictive than what we are requiring at the state level, and you see that that is happening in some, in some counties and cities already with the other existing executive orders.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Dan Forrest, if you can hear me.
Yes, Lieutenant Governor.
Just a couple quick questions. One is, if the governor has to make this decision, I'm assuming that that will need council and state concurrence, just like it did back in March for the shutdowns, for the plan to go into effect or the plan to change, is that correct?
I would defer that question to the governor.
Then just another quick question. What, when these plan decisions are being made, Plan A, B, C, whatever, what are the metrics that are being used to decide the plan? You know, there's been a lot of different, you know, kind of metrics, things thrown out there, like flatten the curve, and those kind of things, and obviously, we started off this talking about, vast majority of research shows that these, that our children are not susceptible, for the most part, to the disease, and other countries around the world, I've only heard of one other school around the world, or a country where the schools have opened up, that was Jerusalem, or a high school, they had some spread of a disease in a high school, but of all the other countries that opened up, the vast majority are saying, no additional spread from doing that. So what are, i- if somebody could just answer, what are the metrics that are determining if we move from Plan A to B to C?
Yes, Ms. Perry, can you respond to that?
Yes, and thank you for that, that question, Lieutenant Governor Forrest. The metrics are the same metrics that we're currently using at the state level to assess the degree to which restrictions are being eased. So the total number of cases, the percent positive hospitalizations, it's the same set of metrics.
And I guess, what, you know, there's, sorry, a follow-up, Mr. Chair, there's.
Yes.
I guess, what, you know, what are we, what are we using to determine if we move from Plan A to B, or start just in B? What is the exact metric? I mean, that's a very broad thing to say, number of cases. I mean, we know that the number of cases goes up every day, we know that the hospitalizations have been going up slightly in the last days as well. What is the metric? Is it a certain percentage of hospital beds full regionally? Obviously, there's counties, you have, you know, counties that have probably no active cases right now, and you're going to say that they have to operate on the same plan as counties that have, you know, tougher issues that they're dealing with, those kinds of things. I'm really, I'm very curious about what the specific metrics are, not a broad brush of, are the cases going up, and, you know, are hospitals in a certain community at a certain capacity? What, we're talking about the entire state here.
Ms. Perry, do you have anything?
This is Susan, this is, this is Susan Galperry again. Yes, thank you for that follow-up, sir. I think you've heard Secretary Cohen talk about the need to look at those metrics in combination with each other, and I would defer that question to Secretary Cohen and the Public Health Team for further follow-up. But generally speaking, there's no one metric or one set number at which those levels are being determined. It's looking at those metrics in combination.
Mr. Chair, one just final thought. You know, I think that that's a pretty critical question. We're asking today to vote on these recommendations for the entire state, but nobody seems to know what the goal line is here, and what we're trying to accomplish in doing all this, ultimately. I think that question needs to be answered. Without that question being answered, Mr. Chair, I will vote no, I want people to know why that is, but I think that this is just a very basic, basic decision. I think all the, all the things that are laid out here in the recommendations, I don't have any problem with the things that are laid out here in general terms, but I think we should have a very clear understanding before we move into Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C, as to what the metrics are, and I think our school districts deserve to know that as well, as well as our superintendents, as well as our parents.
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor. Other comments or questions?
Chairman, Mr. Buck.
Mr. Buck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a number of questions, I want to ball up into one, and then have one additional, if I could. A lot of our districts seem to be making plans for some kind of hybrid, so even if we're going in under Plan A in the fall, I see folks announcing virtual academies, options for parents to go virtually, looking at a mix, not just for high-risk populations or families, but potentially anyone who's asking, and then even potentially looking at some courses for online and others for in-person if they can. I want to make sure I understand the calendar legislation with those plans, and be assured that districts are going to have flexibility for those kind of flexible plans that would go well beyond five virtual days as envisioned under a Plan A scenario by the legislation, and make sure that, in fact, their reading and our reading of that legislation is consistent, which I hope it is, that they have flexibility to take these kind of actions.
So, Mr. Buck, in my understanding of the legislation, is that we likely will need a modification in order to have more remote days, and I know that Mr. McKinney is working with General Assembly members on clarifying that interpretation, and determining if steps are needed to ensure that we can operate a Plan B scenario within the appropriate statute. Mr. McKinney, do you have anything to add to that response?
The allow for schools to.
Please, go ahead.
Yes, sir. We have definitely been in discussion with legislators to consider allowing schools to utilize remote instruction days prior to the August 24th statute, and to consider removing the cap of five remote instruction days currently. So those are definitely considerations that we've been discussing.
Great, thanks, Mr. Chair. And I think what was passed then, probably reflected what folks thought might be the case in August, clearly have some different realities now, and I think doing that would support innovation in our districts and good flexible planning, so I hope that we can work with them to get that done. Second question is probably for Assistant Secretary Perry, and just to help me understand face masks as a recommendation versus a requirement.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Buckson, appreciate it. And as I mentioned, right now, as the guidance is currently written, face masks are strongly, strongly recommended for students and staff. We do have concern that there are some individuals for whom the wearing of face masks will not be possible, and we are currently doing a scan of all other states and how they're handling requirement versus recommended face covering, wearing. We do know that it is an effective tool for mitigating spread, so as the guidance is currently written, it is strongly recommended. Obviously, the board or a school district could, again, adopt a more restrictive posture at this time than what is in the state-level health guidance. However, it is something that we continue, are continuing to review very carefully.
Thank you, and I, my only comment is, that makes a lot of sense. It could be that the trends are going such a direction, where if we really do want to get our children back in school where it's most appropriate, which I think we all are hoping for, this might be something we have to consider in order to get children back in school and parents back to work. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Patrick Miller. May I make.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the work that has gone in to creating these plans. The spirit of cooperation and collaboration has been. to creating these plans. Uh, the spirit of cooperation and collaboration has been fantastic, uh, and superintendents have certainly been involved, uh, on every step of the way. And for that, we're very appreciative. And, uh, we appreciate the feedback we were able to give last week, uh, that led to, uh, some significant improvements, uh, in the document, uh, that we have before us today. But I wanted to just take a second to reiterate, uh, Dr. Emery's statement, uh, about the collaboration and the, the hope that this type of cooperation can continue on projects in the future. Because I, I like she believe that working together, we can accomplish, uh, so much more. And I just appreciate the opportunity to be able, uh, to say that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Candace.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to add my praise to the work that's been done at DPI, uh, the leadership of Bev and David and, and the incredible work that the groups have done. Um, I, I'm grateful for that, and I, I can only imagine how grateful all of our people are out in our charters and LEAs who are actually doing this local planning. Uh, I know they've been waiting for this, and, uh, the guidance that it provides for them is, is just terrific. Um, and the effort to make the documents so user-friendly, I'm sure is appreciated out there. Um, just a quick question to make sure I understand what we're asking of our LEAs and charters in terms of their planning and what gets, um, submitted back to DPI. Are they having to, uh, prepare written plans for each of these eventualities? And is there a deadline for them to, to, uh, get those into DPI?
Dr. Emery or Stigall?
I'll speak to this. This is David. Uh, the Plan C is in legislation that the remote learning plans are to be submitted. Uh, that was given several weeks ago from the General Assembly. So, yes, they have to submit or create a Plan C that is submitted. But, uh, their Plan As and Bs, Plan Bs, are not required to come to us. And we're not, we're not asking for one more level of monitoring 'cause it's not our plan to, to monitor. It's, we're here for support and resources for Plan A and Plan B. We have asked if they're willing to share some strategies within those plans that we could, as I mentioned earlier, we could, uh, put in our guidebook to help others as they're navigating through this. That's the only level that we've asked for reporting. But Plan A and B are not required to come to us.
Thank you. I just wanted some clarity on that.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Forrest.
Uh, so, just very briefly to, uh, Dr. Stigall and Dr. S- and Dr. Emery, um, again, just extreme gratitude and appreciation. Wanted to heap more accolades on you and thank you for, uh, your diligence, um, on this effort. I have one question, clarifying question just for, um, just regarding the guidance and how it applies across grade levels. Um, i- is there any nuance or specificity according to, uh, to each of the plans, uh, A through C, um, that, that changes based upon the grade level? For instance, I would imagine that, um, enforcing social distancing in early grades or elementary would be a different, um, endeavor than it would be for secondary, um, and just in its enforceability and in the developmental ability of students to follow some of these protocols. And so, uh, could you, could you speak a little bit about that and how it would apply across grade levels?
Uh, this is Bev. Um, thank you for the question, and I would also invite our DHHS folks to speak to that. I think the actual health and safety guidelines, in terms of what is required, apply across all grade levels. Obviously, we know that approach, uh, would be different, um, and why the guidebook, I think, offers so many different, uh, operationalized strategies to try to, um, reach different populations of students. Um, I also think instructionally, those different schedules you see, um, also offer districts an opportunity to look at, um, particularly in Plan B, how we might look at those populations to determine if we're only bringing 50%. And I know you've heard us give this example, but, you know, for e- economic reasons and childcare, if you had to go to 50%, uh, one of those strategies is bringing in all your elementary students and spreading them across other buildings while the six through 12 population might be doing remote learning in a, in a blended environment. Um, I, I think with all things, um, we have to be really careful in teaching and learning about, um, the developmental readiness of our, of our kiddos. And yes, will, uh, some of this be more challenging? Um, it will be at certain grade levels. But I just wanna echo what has been said here, which is, if that's what we've got to do to get our kids back in classrooms, then, um, it's an opportunity for all of us to do that together.
Thank you, Dr. Emery. This is Susan Gail Perry again. Um, and I, I think everything you said is exactly right. And I would just add a couple of things. One is, yes, obviously, you know, the, the requirement for the six feet social distancing would be across grade levels in Plan B and in general, encouraging and promoting that social distancing is, is, uh, asked for in all plan levels. However, I would say exactly what you said, that from a developmental perspective, chil- younger children, but frankly, children of all ages have a tendency to bunch up together. Um, they're, they move around on buses, there's, there's, so there's, we recognize that there's a lot of, of developmental challenges. So, obviously, it's gonna be necessary to, to, to the extent possible, help that social distancing be maintained. But again, that's why the cloth face coverings are so important. And, and equally important is that those cloth face coverings are worn appropriately. I would also just add that, um, someone asked earlier about the preschool guidance. Uh, a memo was issued jointly by DPI and DHHS for pre-K specifically. Um, pre-K, uh, should be following the childcare guidance, which aligns with the school guidance, but it does have some more developmentally appropriate items in it, uh, because these are even younger children. And of course, cloth face covering should not be worn by children under the age of two. So, thank you for that question.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, can I make a brief comment?
Uh, Chair Duncan.
Thank you. Uh, three, three thoughts. Um, first, thank you to the wonderful work of DPI staff in, in bringing about this and the collaboration that's been undertaken with sectors of our, uh, educational community to try to bring in a, a wide level of consideration. Also wanna give thanks to our partners at DHHS who have been, um, uh, very, very thoughtful and considerate and have worked closely with trying to provide information to the guidance and, and to the board and to the department through the course of the last several months, at a time when we can all only begin to imagine how stressful it is in their department with the, uh, demands of the public health consideration. Uh, just wanted to note, there, there are gonna be a lot of questions and critiques about this guidance, and that will surprise and should surprise no one because there is no playbook for this. This is, this is our first run at this kind of consideration anywhere, uh, and certainly in our state. So, I just would wanna emphasize as we go into this that we all seek to be kind to one another and have our critiques and questions working towards the best solutions that we can. 'Cause we, we will, as, as Superintendent Johnson set the tone at the start of the meeting by saying, there almost certainly will be some modifications as we go along, um, because of the changing circumstances. And so, uh, I, I wanna emphasize that we will have an open ear very much so. And I know all other parties involved will as well, as we need to, uh, modify, i- if that may occur, and be willing to do so, and be appreciative of the input we get. And the input, uh, given, if it's in a collaborative solution-oriented way, will be the very most effective and the thing that will help our students the most. Uh, and also wanted to make the observation with respect to communications, and this really ties hand in hand to the last comment. There will be a tremendous need to communicate, uh, more deeply than ever before in the districts. And that puts yet another very significant demand on our districts. We should all acknowledge and note that. And find ways to support it as best we can, 'cause communications will become critical. Um, rumors and word of mouth will spread, and it will not always be accurate. And trying to combat that will require a strong effort, and, and trying to be ahead of it will be an important effort. So, uh, all we can do to communicate, that's gonna be extraordinarily important. With those thoughts, I have one question, uh, that I wanted to ask. We've gotten a lot of input from various, um, people who have suggested that, uh, even if schools are open, they may have particular, uh, vulnerabilities for their students or within the people who live in their household. You know, how can those best be addressed? Um, and I, 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 I think there's some thought given in this plan to those issues, but I think some form of a clear response to the, what, what I would characterize as a reasonably large number of inquiries that I've received on that question would be, I think, helpful to have out there.
Ms. Perry, would you like to response, respond with, uh, guidance around vulnerable citizens or any other aspect of the plan?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman Davis. Uh, and, and thank you, Mr. Duncan, for your comments. Very appreciated. Uh, yeah, there is a section in, in the public health guidance on vulnerable populations, and I do think it will need some careful consideration. And there will be a lot of operational considerations around that at the district level. So, starting with vulnerable, potentially vulnerable at-risk staff and, uh, the, the human, the HR issues and legal issues around accommodating those staff will need to be looked at carefully and, and what is possible, um, for those staff members who, who are, who do, do fall into the high-risk, uh, categories. And in the guidance that we've issued, we, we, we are recommending strongly and requiring that schools have a plan for how they're going to handle that. I also need to really think through all of their, uh, students with, uh, special health needs and, um, different kinds of IEPs and other plans to see what is going to be appropriate for them. I think, again, you know, a lot of the spread mitigation is gonna be in the, in the screening and exclusion policy to, to really try to mitigate the spread coming in and out of the schools and back into the communities. What we're seeing with a lot of the other places where there are outbreaks is, is the, the spread is coming from outside, not from within. And so, it, again, that, that, that screening protocol, the hygiene protocol, the face mask wearing, those are the things that are going to, gonna protect folks from, from further spreading the disease. But again, addressing high-risk populations and vulnerable populations is going to, going to be, I think, something that has to be thought very carefully through by school districts. And we've provided some preliminary guidance and will continue to partner with, with DPI and superintendents around that items moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Any other comments?
Chair Davis, I, I have just a, I want to, um, I have a final thought, not necessarily a question, but something that's been on my mind the last few minutes of this discussion. And I, I don't know whether to call it in the weeds, maybe it is, doesn't matter, I just need to say it. Um, this, these re- recommendations and requirements are, are going to place a lot of, um, new, I don't wanna call it demands, but our students are gonna have to make enormous adjustments to these changes in the normal school day. Very different from the way they've, uh, the way they have interacted and engaged in the school in years past. For the kindergarten student, it will almost seem normal. But for the students who've been in school for a while, it will be very not normal, abnormal. Um, and I, I s- I just see myself as a former building principal at one time and also a classroom teacher. And I would hope that we don't find our students being sent to the principal's office on a regular basis because they've broken one of the requirements. And sometimes just not knowing, not, it's so new to them, they would have, they haven't gotten accustomed to the changes. So, I'm saying that, I suppose, in a public kind of way, as, um, let's make sure that our educators, and I, I don't want to give the impression that they're going to be stern and they're going to be dictatorial and, uh, you know, just, you know, draconian. But I, I, I want us to be mindful of, of the points that I've raised. Thank you.
Dr. Oxendine, I, yeah, I think you make a powerful observation. And just to build on, on your statement, um, could I ask, if you're not speaking, to go on mute, please?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I'm not speaking to you, but whoever is, needs to go on mute. Thank you. The, yes, Dr. Oxendine, again, I think you make a powerful observation, um, that the degree of change and adjustment that our students will experience. I think what I also hear in your comments is, while there is some degree of authority to be able to mandate, legislate, dictate by policy, how we respond, I think the greater power is in how we lead by example, to care for one another. And to do this more and do the, uh, endure these changes more as a way of demonstrating how we care for each other and wanna share our schools with each other and enjoy the benefit from what our teachers and schools bring. Less from the spirit of compliance and more from the spirit of compassion and cooperation. I think the manner in which, um, DPI staff has partnered with those across our state, as well as the DHHS team, is exactly that spirit of compassion and cooperation that we could build on. And so, I hear you charging us as leaders to, we go forth from this meeting is to demonstrate that compassion and cooperation in small ways and large ways. Maybe as small as being where, willing to wear an uncomfortable mask, 'cause I wanna send this, only actually be active in keeping the world safe for you or others. But also, I wanna send that signal that I care about you, as well as large ways, making decisions for our students. So, thank you for making that observation and for lifting up this discussion to another level that, uh, will serve our students well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chair Davis, this is Mrs. White. I have, um, a comment.
Yes, Ms. White.
Uh, in addition to, um, the comments that Dr. Oxendine made, um, I'm gonna share, I'm, I'm going to vote for the plan because I think we must have a plan. I want to echo the sentiments of other colleagues who have applauded the work of the diverse group of stakeholders who are, who have participated in the plan. However, I also share the Lieutenant Governor's concerns about the use of metrics and data, um, to determine, um, to what level of implementation we need to activate this plan. Um, I'm not an epidemiologist, nor am I a medical doctor, um, nor do I have any kind of biology degree. Or, um, i- in my background, I was a history major. Um, however, I'm looking at how the data has been presented, um, as the disease has progressed through our, or the, excuse me, the virus has progressed through our state. And the mortality rates have tracked evenly along with the contagion, um, cases. And there hasn't been a significant degree in the mortality, uh, um, degree of increase in the mortality rate. And so, um, in fact, three-fifths of the, of the deaths in our state are coming from congregate care. And so, I have a concern about how the metrics are being applied. I know that's not a popular opinion. Um, and then I want to bring back, uh, what Dr. Oxendine said. Not only are we asking students to behave differently, we're putting an enormous amount of pressure on the educators in our individual classrooms, um, to be responsible for the safety of the students, um, who enter their classes. I, I work with first, second, and third graders on a daily basis in an after-school program. And the hilarity of asking them to have face masks... And the hilarity of asking them to have face masks and face coverings and keep up with them. And what happens to the classroom teacher when Johnny says, you know, "I can't find my face covering. Where's my mask?" Is it the school's responsibility to provide another one? And the burden that that teacher, particularly at the elementary school level, will feel in keeping those students separated and keeping them covered and keeping their hands washed. And I'm thinking how he or she is going to manage all that and teach at the same time. So, again, I'll vote for the plan because I think we must have one. An enormous amount of thought went into this one, but whether or not it's applicable is yet to be determined from my personal perspective. Thanks for the opportunity to give my thoughts.
Thank you for sharing those perspectives, Ms. White, that are here for so many of our citizens across the state. Mr. Risto Smith, do you have a comment?
So Chair Davis, thank you. And I'm not sure to whom this question should be directed, Chair Davis. But look, it's an implementation question. Looking at the screening flow chart that was on page 13 of Ms. Perry's presentation and the differing degrees of requirements for students or staff to be kept at home for 10 days, as long as 14 days, based on whether they have been exposed, whether they've been diagnosed, or whether they have demonstrated at least one symptom. A question occurs to me that has to do with how that translates into the leave, professional leave, sick leave, leave without pay structures that we have in place for our staff. And I'm wondering if there are some discussions perhaps underway at the board and at the agency to provide additional leave, compensatory leave. I know the purpose of this screening process is to mitigate spread, and I think that's very powerful and important. But when I'm thinking about, you know, teachers who have, may not have that sick leave in place to cover 10 days or 14 days, particularly our beginning teachers, 1, 2, and 3 in North Carolina, I see that as an implementation concern. So I just wanted to bring that to you and see if there was any kind of work in progress or any updates we could get in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Zemri or Stigall, do you have a response to that?
Uh, I think... Dr. Zemri, I can, yeah, I can give my initial reaction and then you can come in. That is echoing back to my first comment. That is a, that is a reason why we are not saying that these are final operational guidelines and they will forever be changing and a living document. And then, along with that idea and the policy changes that are brought up by that and the legislative changes that were brought up with that, I do want to make sure that the State Board understands that you're getting two different presentations. You're getting the DHHS plan, which is already the plan from DHHS. That has been publicly released. It's Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. What you're seeing from DPI is the very beginning of our operational strategies to help local superintendents implement DHHS's plan. Some districts have already themselves been working on strategies that they themselves can plug into DHHS's plan for Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. So that is an excellent suggestion, one that would have to be taken forward with the State Board and the General Assembly to make the policy and legislative changes required. But it's a great example of why we are in no way saying that the DPI operational guidance is by any means final. This is something where we will, again, be sending it out. We've already sent out to the superintendents to give feedback and suggestions. The school's reopening task force will now take this and run with it, and that includes members of the General Assembly. And then there are obviously issues that we have to face with if we get to Plan B. Does that mean more remote learning? So we need those calendar changes. Also, if we need to make accommodations for students or staff or teachers who are at high risk, do they need some kind of flexibility to be able to stay at home and continue remote learning plans, even if we're under Plan A? So that, the DPI guidance we're at the beginning, I'm not entirely sure what the State Board is voting on today, but I know you're not really voting on the DHHS guidelines. Those are, those are already done. Those are from DHHS. So these are presentations on where we are now in the steps to reopening schools.
Yes, Mr. Risto Smith, do you have a follow-up?
So Chair Davis, I certainly, I think it is a keen distinction that Superintendent Johnson is making between the DHHS plan and how that translates into practice. And I know that as Dr. Stigall indicated, the implementation guidance is going to be a work in progress. I'm greatly appreciative of that. I know they have a lot of voices at the table and that these are issues that are going to be worked through. So I hope that I did not muddy the waters by asking an implementation question about the DHHS guidance. That certainly was not my intent. And then I hope that I did not imply in any way that I am not supportive of the implementation guidance that has been provided already because I think it's excellent. I think all of it is excellent. And I think ultimately, at the very end of the day, it's going to protect children. And I don't think any of us wants any child in North Carolina to suffer from coronavirus like Aria Soto Morales, the eight-year-old girl from Crete Side Elementary in Durham who we lost a couple of weeks ago. So I know that everybody is operating in good faith with the interest of keeping children safe. My question was really maybe a practical question. I could have asked that offline, but I...
No, you're 100% fine. No, those are exactly the questions that we want asked. They're exactly the feedback that we want. I just wanted to make sure that State Board members also knew these are two separate documents that they're seeing right now.
Yeah, to echo the Superintendent's comments, Mr. Risto Smith, we welcome, as always, your questions and others from advisors. To clarify what we are doing today as a board, the action today would be to adopt this current guidance in its current form and direct the agency to bring back to us in July, policy recommendations for the implementation of this guidance. So that's how your question, Mr. Risto Smith, and other similar ones that relate to policy needed to implement this guidance will be addressed. And not that all policy recommendations will be addressed in our July meeting. Can anticipate that it will require a series of those adjustments as we continue this work. But the purpose of today's action is to adopt the guidance, provide it to our superintendents and charter school leaders publicly so that they can continue their work in developing local plans and at the same time, direct the agency to bring back to us the policy recommendations needed for its implementation. Hopefully, that clarifies the purpose of today's action by the board. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to add my recognition on those work group leads and other team members who contributed to this work. And I'd ask Dr. Townsend Smith that he could go back and present those leaders as conclusive remarks. To those who have worked diligently throughout this process, we want to thank your diligence and attention to detail and your ultimate professionalism that does not go unnoticed. Thank you for your continued service to North Carolina and our public school students. We all know that it's a work of love and that students are always first with the decisions and recommendations that you make. It's an honor to work with each one of you. And what you have accomplished for North Carolina here today demonstrates the power of unity and collaboration, just like our majestic lighthouses in North Carolina. This work is a true guiding light, shining the way forward for all of our students. But during our voting portion of this meeting, we will vote on adopting the EPI operational guidance and directing the agency to bring back policy recommendations. But before that vote, we have one committee that needs to do some work. And I'll turn to Vice Chair Duncan, Chair of the Business Operations Committee.
Thank you, Chair Davis. On behalf of my colleague Todd Chastain and I, we bring forward this, these matters for a report from the BizOP Committee today. BizOP 1 is approval of contracts that are over $500,000. You have had those materials, had an opportunity to review them. There have been a couple of questions that have actually risen before, but now become more direct to get a better understanding. The North Carolina State University Outreach for Public Schools contract, which essentially involves the preparation and the necessary work to have end-of-year, end-of-course-type testing done for our accountability department, a great deal of work goes into that, a great deal of testing goes into it. So it's a very important project, particularly when you take into account how much weight is sometimes put on these tests. That's certainly in debate for another day. But the contract poses $8,536,000 for June 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, and then has a rising scale over the two years following that. And the proposed term is for three years at those rates. And the question that's risen is if we did not use all of the tests from last year because of the unfortunate circumstances of how our school year ended, would we necessarily be using those tests for some other form? That is, perhaps using them not for accountability testing, but to assist informative testing at the start of the year to get a sense of where students are coming out of a period of not having been in school? What are the areas that teachers need to focus on to work with these students? And whether or not they would be used for that or if they would not be used, in which case, we might want to take a look at how they might be used in the future that might not thereby require the need for the full amount of the contract over the course of the next three years. And I think we were going to get some clarification on that from Dr. Howard or Dr. Stigall to help answer that question that had arisen from the board members.
Good morning. This is Tammy Howard, Director of Accountability Services. And we appreciate the opportunity to address more fully the question regarding the ongoing impact from not having administered the statewide assessments in the grade and end-of-course in the spring of 2020. I'd like to begin with reminding us all that there is a State Board policy, Test 013, that lays out the test development process for all of the state assessments. And the interesting thing about that policy is that it demonstrates very clearly that test development is an activity that occurs over time, over years. It's not an activity that occurs within a confined period of 12 months, but rather, in any given year, the work in that year is preparing for assessments that will be delivered a year or two years, even three years down the road. And I think that's very clearly demonstrated in that policy. If we think about the work for the NC State TOPS contract in any given year, we're basically doing two things. We're developing to build future tests, as I just referenced, Test 013 demonstrates. And we're also producing the current test. So already, as of today, June 11th, even though we did not administer the spring test as scheduled for end-of-grade and end-of-course, we're still working on making sure that those tests are ready and available for other purposes that they will be used actually in the coming weeks as hopefully our schools return to face-to-face opportunities. So some of those tests, as we recall, with the General Assembly, they passed a law a few weeks ago that for placement in advanced math courses, students, rather than having the typical process of having a Level 5 on an end-of-grade or end-of-course test, that decision is being made locally. However, a parent or a student can request to be administered the end-of-grade or end-of-course test if they were not locally placed so they can still demonstrate that they're at a Level 5. So our team is having to make sure that those assessments for the EOG and the EOC math are ready to be administered to any student or parent who makes themselves available of that process and comes to us in late July, going into August, to have those test administrations. The development of the test is one piece. The work that goes behind it to make sure that it can be delivered. And I know we oftentimes talk about the tests are in the warehouse. Well, yes, they're in the warehouse, but the majority of the state is delivering these assessments online. And so the online administration requires a whole technical team to make sure that they're able to be delivered accurately, securely, and that the data flows so that it can be appropriately attributed to the correct accountability year. So even though those tests are sitting there, some of them are going to be used as we go forward in the next several months. And even if they weren't going to be used, there is work that has to occur to place them, particularly the online and even the paper pencil test. They have to be retrofitted so that the data coming out of all of that will be appropriately attributed to the 2020-21 school year and not the 2019-20 school year. So while we don't have to build those assessments necessarily, not all of them, there is significant work that has to occur to make sure that this is done appropriately. I'd also like to point out that of those assessments, grades four and seven, those are our identified grades with our innovative assessment pilot that's through the U.S. Department of Education. And as a reminder, that was given to the Department of Public Instruction in 2019. It is a five-year plan, and the goal of that is to have through-grade assessments and to optimize the use of innovative item types. So where we are now is since we were unable to administer the spring 2020 assessments and we had embedded items in there that was going to allow us to do some of the work with that innovative pilot, we have had to sit down and refocus our plan. And we've really seen this as an opportunity to say, okay, we get another year to continue the development, what really should we focus on? And our focus at this point is to focus on performance items and more innovative item types than really the embedded plan in spring of 2020 was supporting. So we're seeing this as an opportunity to continue our development work. And as a reminder to us all, the General Assembly also put in state statute that we are to develop this through-grade assessment model. So that's a good example of how the development work is not constrained to one year, but the development work really carries on across years as we anticipate being able to then deliver an assessment to the field in one year, two years, and in some cases, in this case, with the innovative assessment, really in three years. We also have some other assessments that are going to occur in 2020-21. For example, the beginning of grade three, the team is finalizing it and preparing it so it can be administered paper pencil and it can be administered online. We also have the NC check-ins, and we're also doing some revision work around the career readiness alternate that is provided to students with disabilities that qualify for the ACT rather than taking the ACT. And then the question has come up about the possibility of administering the assessments that were not administered in the spring of 2020. Could we possibly administer those in the fall of 2020? And the answer to that, from a feasibility perspective, would be absolutely yes. The consideration there would be what would the purpose be? The purpose would be to give teachers information of exactly where these students are, given five months of not being in a face-to-face situation with a school. But it's also a consideration for the growth analysis. So without the test administered in spring 2020, it's not that we can't calculate growth at the end of 2021 because we use all previous test scores. But if you think about it, those previous test scores then go back to 2019. So there has been some conversations about thinking through the possibility of administering those assessments in the fall, what that would look like, what would be the purpose, and what would be the benefits. Let me stress, please, it would not be for accountability. It would not be for comparing schools, comparing districts, or, you know, evaluating remote learning. That is not the purpose. The purpose... The purpose would be to give more information to district leaders and school leaders so they can make instructional decisions moving forward. And one thing to remember about the growth, of course, is that the growth, having those assessments in the fall, the proprietor for EVOS, which is SAS, would be able to do then projections based on that data that teachers could have in the fall of 2020 to see where their students are with those projections and where they need to go with respect to performance on the EOG in the spring of 2021. And Tom Berland, Dr. Tom Berland is on the call as well if we need him to address that a little bit more detailed.
All right. Well, I think...
Absolutely. I'm sorry.
I don't think we need Dr. Tom Berland yet on that part. But go ahead and finish your thoughts, Dr. Howard, please.
Okay. Thank you so very much. So the other thing to remember is that this contract does more than test development and test delivery. Granted, that is a huge part of this contract. But the hallmark of this contract is really its flexibility to adjust to the needs of the state through conversations, really with many of our colleagues in the Department of Public Instruction. So the flexibility allowed a few years ago, our career technical education colleagues, their testing vendor discontinued operations basically overnight. And through the flexibility of the NC State contract, we were able to work with CTE and provide those assessments to those students. And that's been about five years ago. That flexibility is very important. And we're always looking at the TOPS contract to make sure that if our work scope changes, that we change as well. A good example of that is this past year. We knew it was the last year for the NC final exams. And so the contract cost that you see in front of you is $1 million less than it was the previous year because we built into our planning and our structure around the needs and demands of the NC State contract to pay attention to attrition and retirements so that we did eliminate some positions knowing that we were not going to have the scope from those NC final exams. There's several other areas that I'd just like to mention that the team at NC State helps with. They help with textbook adoption. And I will confess, I do not know all of the details of that work, but I know they work with Dr. Camilla Fair and her team to prepare the materials and the processes and the reviews for the textbook adoption process. They also provide test items to SchoolNet, of course, which is a system that is available to our districts and schools across the state. This past year, they loaded 13,000 items into SchoolNet. And one of the most important parts of any test delivery system or any formative assessment system that is providing items is to constantly refresh those items, to not just put items in and leave them stagnant for several years. And so that is key work that they do in loading the SchoolNet. They're also involved with our accountability data collection. So one way to think about this is a student sits down with a paper pencil test or a student sits down at a computer. But that data from those assessments has to be processed. So eventually, it gets to the analyst in the accountability team that they can then run all of the reports. And so that's also a very complex process that is constantly being tweaked and improved. They also help with processing of medical exceptions, which are students who, due to their fragile medical conditions, cannot participate in the assessments. And they also assist us with our security and our testing irregularity system. And most importantly, I think this contract is very responsive to our district needs. We get feedback consistently throughout the year. I know we think of testing as something that happens in May and June. But really and truly, the work of the division and the work of NC State TOPS is ongoing every day. In fact, this morning, we had a meeting with our advisory group, which is a group of local test coordinators and accountability directors. And they're always thinking the things of how we can improve our processes and our delivery of products that we deliver with the assessments. So it's really ongoing, ongoing work. So in closing, I'd like to make two points. One is that the work in any one year, just to reiterate again, is not confined to one year. It's really building across time. And with the innovative pilot assessment that is in state law and has been approved by the U.S. Department of Education, we really need this year as an opportunity to explore through continued item development around performance tasks and other innovative item types so we can really get the trajectory on the through-grade assessment to where the expectations has been from across the state. And then the last point is that this contract is receipt-based. And what that means is labor, of course, is paid according to positions. And I've already addressed how sometimes we on our own adjust down for positions based on the scope of the work. And then the second part about that is that only receipts are paid. So many of our contracts in the department that I've had experience with, if the contract is for $1 million, at the end of the day, the department is going to write a check for $1 million. That vendor could have had some cost savings that was never shared with us. But in this contract, it's receipt-based. So when the contract is not paid in full due to various cost savings, then that money is in our DPI accounts. And my understanding is the reversions goes back to the general fund. But the money is not retained by NC State. And to give you an example, we did confirm that with the teachers not being in school beginning March 16th, there was less work done around teacher reviews because, remember, our teachers in North Carolina review all of our test items several times, and they get paid for that. So with COVID and the circumstances with the teachers doing remote learning from home and recognizing that possibly this wasn't the best time to have arrangements with them to review items, we do anticipate a cost savings from that of $400,000 for the current fiscal year ending on June 30. So I appreciate your indulgence as I went through all of those details. And welcome any questions that you may have.
Dr. Howard, thank you for that thorough report on the testing regime, which went into great detail and provided a lot of information for the board. So thank you for that. I have a suggestion that I would like to offer to the board, which is, first of all, we honor our partners at NC State. And we worked so hard on these testing materials for a long time. It's been a great partnership. And they're looking at a year coming up immediately in just two or three weeks, based on when we've got this contract. And so for the reasons you have highlighted, the quality of their work and the importance of their work, I don't think we want to do anything other than look at going ahead and confirming a contract for the coming year for the July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021 year as set out. But from what you have said, there are a number of things in flow and in transition in some respects with some of the work that's being done and some decisions not yet made with respect to some of the testing work that's already been done as to how that might best be used or how it would be used, if at all. So it strikes me that we should perhaps modify this slightly to go ahead and vote on the contract for the 2021 year that would begin July 1. And then have you come back and report and much, once we've got a fuller picture and decisions are made and we know what the school year looks like for the coming year in two to three months, so we can then fully consider years two and three as to how the best approach to go forward will be, which perhaps may be as it's set out now. It may well be the case. But on the other hand, you'll have fuller information and know exactly how we're going forward and how to best deal with these considerations that none of us expected and at the same time, work closely with our partner while we're doing it. So my suggestion would be that's how we proceed, which is to move forward to pass the contract for this year, which you have outlined, the work that can be fully done during that year and would represent very necessary work. But then we take a look, once we have a better assessment of where we are in another two or three months, and come back and finally consider the other two years of the proposed contract, which, as I said, may end up exactly where they are. But we do need to be sensitive to making sure we've got all the facts first as this is in flux. So that's what I would propose to the board as a way to go. And Dr. Howard, please feel free to comment on that as need be.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Duncan. And we would appreciate the opportunity to come back to the board and share in more detail some of the work that is done, both in the Accountability Division and with our partners at NC State. It is comprehensive. It is complex. In transparency, my only hesitation is, in the context of this contract, we typically do a two-year. For some time, we have done two-year. This is the first time we have done a three-year amendment. But of course, we will concur with the board's approval and wishes.
Well, we welcome you to come back, first of all. And what you explained today has been very helpful. So we welcome you coming back very much so. And we're not talking about waiting right up until the time when the contract, really genuinely talking about we go three months down the road and we have some better picture of where we are. Three months brings us to the end of September, October timeframe. And I think we, in terms of how these last year's tests may or may not be used this year and the other considerations you brought to the front will be much clearer. And then I think we can proceed at that point with much greater clarity to take a look at the next two years. So and that's the only right thing to do, to be good partners with NC State. And that would be fully our intention. So thank you for your comments and remarks. Very helpful.
Thank you.
Are there additional thoughts and comments on this? Not hearing any others. Our second item today is, uh, two involves recommendation for the allotment policies. This comes out of the CARES Act, Fund, the legislature's passage of a number of appropriations to support the work of the schools through the COVID-19 situation that's been such a factor in all that we have done and will do for quite a while. There are five different areas. Bus Wi-Fi for $1 million, $11 million for home and community Wi-Fi, $10 million for contracting mental health professionals, $1,448,000 for a learning management system, and $15 million for grants for exceptional children services. I think Alexis Schouts is here to go through with us what the allotment policies for each of these five areas would be and provide recommendations from the department, having carefully studied with the subject matter experts as well as researching appropriate information to make fair allotments. Ms. Schouts, let me give you the floor if I could.
Thank you, sir. Yes, this is Alexis Schouts, the Director of School Business. And you have in your materials, the draft recommended policies associated with these items that were passed in House Bill 1043. This is the next wave. The board has already approved the allocation for the school nutrition allocation of $75 million. And then these are the next, and the computer, excuse me, and the student computers, as well as the staff computers and the summer learning plans. So starting with the mobile Wi-Fi for school buses, this is $1 million that is for the Wi-fis for school buses, and it is by application. And as you can see in the formula itself, it states that the applications will go to the Digital Teaching and Learning Division. And then in the event that our requests exceed the total funds available, that the priority will be provided to school districts and this includes all public school units that are based in the lower percentage of estimated households with Internet subscriptions. Related to the special provisions, and we've seen several of these allocations now, you will note that the first item states that they are only for purchases of devices and not for subscriptions. And then, and the funds do expire December 30. And then the items after that are the boilerplate restrictions placed on these funds as they are rooted from the coronavirus relief money. If you'd like me to take a pause if there are any questions, else I can move on to the next item.
Let me suggest you go through all five items. And if there's questions on any item, the members can come back and ask at that time.
Excellent. The next item is for $11 million related to mobile Wi-Fi for communities and homes. This allocation will be, is recommended to be allotted based on 50% based on the average yearly membership for the school district. And then 50% allotted based on, it is a weighting, providing more funding to areas that are located in counties with a lower estimated household with Internet subscriptions. And our source data for that is FCC data. The next item is related to $10 million for contracting mental health professionals. The formula for this, for these funds is actually explicit in the legislation in the House Bill 1043. And it states that the funds will be allocated on the same basis as the instructional support positions are allocated. This, public schools receive a specific allocation for instructional support that is in the form of positions. And this $10 million will be allocated in that same method, which really is a per diem basis. The specific information related to how these funds can be expended, they can only be expended for contracted services of these positions. And mental health professionals are defined in the legislation as school nurses, school psychologists, school counselors, and school social workers. So they are restricted to those, that specific purpose. Item, the next item is $1,448,000 for learning management system licenses. This is being recommended as an allotment that will be by application. And the application will go through the department and a school district, or, excuse me, a public school unit because this is open to all public school units. If they do not currently have a contract with Canvas, then they can request and apply for funding for the base cost to initiate that contract, plus request the cost for licenses. If they currently have a contract with Canvas, then they can request funding for expanding the number of licenses. We do anticipate that the requests will exceed the available funding for this item. And in which case, in order to be equitable to all, our first focus priority will be to fund the requests for licenses and not for that base cost. And then the second reduction will be to reduce all requests on a prorata basis so that the funds granted will be within the funds available. And then the final item is $15 million. It is for a grant for exceptional children services. And it is explicit in the language of the law that these are, that this is a grant program. The Exceptional Children's Division will be administering this grant. And the funds are to provide an extended school year service or future services as appropriate for students who qualify. And these students generally are those students that are very high-need students. If the grant requests exceed the funds appropriated, then each public school unit shall be capped at a maximum award based on the percentage of students identified with the specific educational needs. And this is data that is available within the exceptional children's area. They anticipate that that will be 20% or less of the population. And then if the funds, excuse me, if the grant requests exceed, still exceed, then we will... we will prorate all the grant requests equitably based on the April 2020 child count. Without, with that, there, I have nothing else to present, and I'm happy to take any questions or defer to their, our program people if it goes outside of the realm of allocations.
All right. Well, thank you for that report. And again, we thank the legislature for the, this funding on these. All of them are, you know, quite obviously extraordinarily necessary and real needs for the situation we find ourselves in, and we thank, are thankful for the responsiveness. Are there questions about the allotment approaches taken for these five items? All right. Not hearing any. That would take us to BizOP 3, which is a discussion item. And in light of time, we're going to seek to delay this until our July meeting, or if we're able to, if we have to have a meeting before then, we can certainly put it in at that point. What we do want to, if we delay it, however, we would say that the, the board would need to waive the June timeline that's in the policy at this time. Expect a full report out in July so that we can then take action. But, so we may, if we can, if we have to have another meeting before a July meeting, we certainly can see if we can fit it into the agenda. But otherwise, we will see, look at delaying it until July at this point in light of the time that we find ourselves at right now. Mr. Chair, is that acceptable to you?
Yes, without objection. The order.
And that would complete the BizOP report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. So at our next meeting, we do look forward to receiving and acting on any forthcoming policy recommendations for our state's reentry guidance. Seeing that we have no other new business, we'll move to voting on the items before us today, which consist of three items. One is the DPI reentry guidance, which we've discussed in detail, along with the two items from BizOP. So at this time, I'll request a motion to approve the DPI reentry guidance and BizOP 1 and 2.
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to approve those items with the caveat that on BizOP 1, the contract with NC State University be for the 2021 school year, the, that, that year of the contract, and would come back to the board for consideration of the other two years in the, no later than the October meeting of the board.
Motion by Vice Chair Duncan. Is there a second?
Olivia offers the second.
Second by Dr. Oxendine. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Dr. Townsend Smith, we call the roll to capture the vote.
Mr. Chair, this is Dan. Could you, I was a little bit confused there. Can you remind me which, what we're voting on right now?
Sure. We're voting to adopt the DPI reentry guidance, direct the agency to bring forth policy recommendations for implementation of that guidance. And we're voting on BizOP 1 as amended by, by Chair Duncan to be a one-year contract and revisiting that item later than October this year, that meeting, and BizOP 2. Those are the three items we're voting on.
Could we separate those out?
Yes, certainly. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Mr. Duncan, would you agree to a friendly amendment to, I tell you what, let's just, let's just start over, clarify, sorry. Let's vote on the DPI reentry guidance first. For that, I'll seek a motion to approve the DPI reentry guidance. Is that Mr. Hall?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the guidance as presented.
Motion by Mr. Hall. Is there a second?
Second. Ms. Camnet.
And that was by Ms. Camnet?
Yes.
By Ms. Camnet. Any questions on this motion? Hearing none. Dr. Townsend Smith?
Yes, sir. Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Camnet?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor?
No. Thank you. Answer is no, if you can hear me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Motion carries. We'll now move to the second items for approval, which are BizOP 1 and 2. Mr. Duncan, would you make that motion? Comes from your committee.
Yes, I'll be glad to. Move the, that we approve BizOP 1 with the modification that on the contract with NC State, that it be for, we approved the contract for the 2021 year. Now, the other parts of the contract come back to us for our, no later than our October meeting, as we have additional information at that point to be able to consider. And then also move to approve BizOP 2 allotment policies.
Motion by Mr. Duncan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Tipton Rogers. Dr. Townsend Smith, we call the roll.
Yes, sir. Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Camnet?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor?
Come on. Yes.
Got you. Thank you. Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
The motion carries. We will, let's move into closed session in about five minutes, like a five-minute break, and then I guess, Dr. Townsend Smith requires for board members just to remain on the line and all others drop. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. With the exception of our General Counsel, two pretend.
Thank you.